Welcome Chief Rich Austin to lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, we pray your blessings upon this meeting and all those gathered here today. Father, let us have a mind of gratitude for the many and abundant blessings you have bestowed upon our community through your loving and gracious nature. Father, we pray for our elected officials, our city staff, and the community members that we serve. We pray, Father, that throughout this time together, you give us all wisdom and a sense of fairness and justice as we all work together to be good stewards of this great community in which you have entrusted us. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Chief Austin. And again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and I would like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council for Monday, August 3rd, 2020 to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to the clerk as soon as possible, which Tammy is sitting here to my right. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls that agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. So I'm going to ask our clerk to please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 3rd, 2020 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll for this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jamison.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Crookley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and I appreciate everybody working with us on our social distancing standards, and it's really easy to pack a room when our seats are all spread out like that, but appreciate everybody's help on that. I'm going to go ahead and ask Tammy to please sound the next item.
The next item is approval of a meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 2203.
Okay. I think staff would like to add, amend the agenda to add a resolution of the City of Milton authorizing participation in the Apple Developer Program and acceptance of contracts associated with this program to new business tonight. Is there anything else on the agenda anyone would like to add? Okay, here none, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I'd have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay Tammy, moving on to public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
I do not have any general public, I have some for later in the.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and read the rules on public comment, whether it's general or not. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that if it's a general contact that is not scheduled, but during the scheduled hearing for items on our agenda, it'll be specific for that. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card on the table and submit it to our city clerk down to Councilmember Jamison's right before that agenda item is called. Please remember it's not a time to engage the mayor or members of council in conversation, and when your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. The city encourages you right now to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your comment card to the clerk before that item. So we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Tammy, if you would please sound those items.
The first item is approval of the June 15th, 2020 regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 2204. The next item is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending June 2020, Agenda Item Number 220205. The third item is approval of a task order between the City of Milton and BM and KPC for asphalt reconstruction and resurfacing project, Agenda Item Number 2206. Our fourth item is approval of a change, approval of change order number four to the professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Interdev LLC to decrease VCIO slash project manager hours, increase technical support, and to account for annual escalator, Agenda Item Number 2207. The next item is approval of change order number one to the goods and services purchase agreement between City of Milton and Utility Associates, Inc. for interview room, cameras, and the new public safety complex, Agenda Item Number 2208. Our sixth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Barry Dunn McNeil and Parker LLC for strategic planning services, Agenda Item Number 2209. Our next item is approval of a change order to construction management at risk agreement between the City of Milton and New South Construction Company LLC for the new public safety complex project. Our next item is approval of additional boarding documents for Invoice Cloud, Inc. merchant account, Agenda Item Number 2211. Our ninth and final consent agenda item is the approval of a plat revision. It's the commercial, the name of the development is the commercial parcel at Lakeside at Crabapple Land Lot Number 1134, 860 and 870 Mayfield Road. It's a minor plat subdivided from 870 Mayfield Road into one lot. 0.742 is the total acres, and the density is one commercial lot, Agenda Item Number 2212.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Crookley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, tonight we don't have any items under reports and presentations, so we'll move on to first presentation. Tammy, if you'll please sound those items.
The first item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to establish the ad valorem tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year 2021 and for other purposes, Agenda Item Number 2213. Finance Director, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the first presentation?
Mayor, I move that we approve the first presentation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we have no items under public hearings, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. If our city clerk would please sound the first zoning agenda item, and before I ask you to do that, in discussion with Ken, my, this item that's coming up before zoning, my day job and my personal company has been asked to help in the construction of that project, so I'm going to recuse myself of any input or decision on this tonight, so Councilmember Jamison as Mayor Pro Tem will preside over this item.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, we do have a public comment on this item.
Okay.
Do we want to do that first?
We sound item first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just making it clear. The first item is consideration of U20 dash 01 VC 2001 located at 12900 Arnold Mill Road by Ebenezer United Methodist Church to request a use permit, Section 64 dash 1804 to construct a 23,000 square foot activity center on the existing church property of 5,088 square feet for a total of 28,088 square feet on 6.61 acres. To request a two-part concurrent variance to, number one, allow parking in front of a building, Section 64 dash 1143, and two, to reduce the required parking, Section 64 dash 1410, Agenda Item Number 2198, Mr. Parag Agrawal.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you this request for a use permit to expand a church use. They're requesting a 23,000 square foot structure for event, not event facility, but for a facility for onsite use, and they're also asking for a two-part concurrent variance. The applicant is Ebenezer United Methodist Church. The last permit issued in 1993 by Fulton County approved in addition for a total of 5,000 square feet on 4.14 acres. Since that time, an additional 2.47 acres has been acquired, therefore the need for the updated use permit for the expansion of the acreage as well as the requested 23,000 square feet for activity center. It is obviously currently zoned AG1. The initial site plan submitted had required two additional concurrent variances. This was back in January, February, based on the location adjacent to residential use on the northern portion of the property. The church and city staff met and a revised site plan was submitted to move the activity center to comply with setbacks and buffers which are 75-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback as well as a 75-foot setback when adjacent to a residential use. So you all are familiar with that area. The Georgia Gulf Driving Range comes around to the north, and we found out that there was a residential use still being used for residents, so therefore we needed to ask for the additional two concurrent variances. But then, we met with the church and their architect and were able to relocate it, turn at 90 degrees, the activity center, based on, in part because of a large oak that was determined to be not viable. And that was approved by our city arborist as well to be removed because of possible hazard. So that allowed the opportunity for the activity center to be turned and to be able to comply with two of the originally asked variances. Right here, we have the location map. Everybody is familiar with it, at the northwest intersection of Cox and Arnold Mill Road. Zoning map, as you can see, the light beige is AG1, the orangey peachy color is City of Roswell. So, this is the revised site plan that you have before you that turns the building, the 90 degrees from what it was, away from the northern property line, as well as adding a proposed pavilion, and there'll be some pictures later on in the presentation. You can see that they're providing a 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to the west. There's a single-family residence between this property and the Gulf Center, and then as it continues around to the north, it provides the required buffer. Again, they're asking for the 23,000 square foot activity center and a pavilion, 144 parking spaces, and the parking spaces include the existing parking spaces right at the corner of Cox and Arnold Mill, as well as some parking in the middle, southern part, and the western part. So this, the applicant and their architect has worked closely with our city architect and on the elevations, as well as understanding this is not set in stone, there would probably need to be some more additional work to it, but as I state in this slide, everything would have to be approved by the design review board before the building permit would be Again, this is example of proposed pavilion. Many of you will see as familiar, I believe it's from the Birmingham United Methodist Church, so obviously it won't be an exact replica, but it just gives an idea of what they want to try to propose and to build on the property. Just going through the different various public participation meetings, we had the CZI meeting on December 17th, six community members were present. There were some property owners in attendance from Etrus Walk, which is located in Roswell to the south across Cox Road. Their concern was with lighting and possible additional traffic. There's also a large concern, there's the intersection at Etrus and Cox at Ebenezer, it's a very difficult situation, intersection, but I believe that right away, an intersection is responsibility of the City of Roswell. Then, the owner-operator of Georgia Gulf Center at the time came and told us about the residents on the northern part of the property, as well as, I just said, about the congestion at Cox and Arnold Mill, as well as Cox and Etrus. Based upon that previous meeting, we added two concurrent variances because of the residents, the residents on the northern portion, and we had the meeting in January, the end of January, no one attended from the community. So, go on. The design review board met on February 4th, and the following comments were made. Support the use permit, need to work on architecture if approved, and would like to see the paint color if approved, and obviously that would be part of their package, is the color scheme and the different material. We always do a material board, colors, the whole nine yards, and they supported the request to reduce the parking. Again, the public participation report, this is a meeting that is required that the applicant hosts and provides, and they had two public meetings that they held, one on December 16th and February 17th at the church. Again, the first meeting, there were four attendees, issues including parking lot lighting and traffic in that intersection of Cox and Arnold Mill Roads. At the planning commission, June 24th, whoops, time travel, so as you all know, we weren't able to meet during the COVID time for planning commission or city council. So, the first time it went to planning commission was on June 24th, and they unanimously recommended the approval of U20 dash 02 and VC 2001, parts one and four, those are two concurrent variances, and we'll talk about them a little more detail. They also made a recommendation to add hours for deliveries, Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. They were thinking that if there was a wedding that was occurring, or different occasions that might need some deliveries at some odd earlier times and during the weekend, so that's why they recommended that additional condition. And every time we look at a use permit, there's certain, there's a set of considerations that are required for us to contemplate, and so the first one is, the existing church is within the AEE land use category on the City of Milton comprehensive plan update map, and a church or place of worship is an allowed use if a use permit is approved by the mayor and city council, therefore it is consistent with the current comprehensive land use plan. So a second. And when we look at compatibility with land uses and zoning in the vicinity, as you know, to the north and northwest is the Driving Range, which is approved through a use permit in Fulton County in 1989. There's scattered single-family residences on various sized parcels to the north and northeast. The southeast is the Ebenezer Cemetery, just south of the new City of Milton Soccer Complex, which is across the street, and that also originally had a use permit for recreation fields that were approved in Fulton County, as well as there was a zoning modification approximately about seven or eight years ago, but now is our facility. To the south, southwest, is the Etrus Walk subdivision within the City of Roswell. Just want to let you know, we reached out to the City of Roswell, and they did not have any issues or asked for any additional conditions or anything like that. And then further to the west is Union Primitive Baptist Church. We recently did an expansion, not we, but they had requested expansion of the church in 2011. And then, single-family residences to the west, okay? And the proposed use currently violates regulations governing land development, but if the requested use permit is approved by you all, then it would be, would no longer be in violation of any type of governing regulations. Number four, there will be minimal effect by the church and associated activity center on traffic flow vehicular and pedestrian along Arnold Mill Road. And number five, location and number of parking spaces. So, there are existing parking in front of existing building and proposed parking along Cox Road in front of the proposed building, as well as a little bit further to the west. Staff is recommending approval of the concurrent variance for location based on the fact that a 15-foot landscape strip planted to buffer standards can be planted along Cox Road to help conceal the parking. The use permit requires 220 spaces based on one space for 35 square feet in the largest assembly area. The applicant has requested to reduce it to 144, of which 27 exist already. Staff is recommending approval of this concurrent variance to reduce the number of parking spaces. Number six, location of open space, the site is 6.61 acres, and there's a stream located on the northwestern portion, and the required 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along with the other buffers to the north as well. So therefore, it does have a fair amount of open space. Number seven, protective screening, again, as I just mentioned, it does have meet the required 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback adjacent to AG1, and again, as mentioned, the 15-foot landscape strip planted to buffer standards along Cox, and a 10-foot landscape strip on the other frontage, which would be Arnold Mill. Number eight, hours of manner of operation, the applicant, we asked them to submit kind of a, an outline of their different activities that they foresee happening, both in the church, as well as the activity center, and based upon that report, we recommended hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sundays, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, and as I previously mentioned, the planning commission recommends. And as I, uh, previously mentioned, the planning commission recommended deliveries Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And in regards to outdoor lighting, um, the applicant has not indicated any additional lighting on the site. If lighting is proposed, it must comply with the night sky ordinance. Ingress and egress to the property, the site plan indicates there are three curb cuts along Cox. The applicant has stated that curb cut closest to the intersection of Cox and Arnold Mill will be eliminated. And the site plan meets all the development standards for the church use permit. So that's under section 64-1804. So I didn't go into detail on that because they did meet those regulations. And based on all those items, uh, staff recommends approval conditional of U2001 for the church and associated activity center. Okay. Next. So now, um, we're going to look at, um, the site plan analysis and categories, the two, uh, variance requests into two items, um, parking and the rural Milton overlay. And as you all are familiar, there are four, um, considerations that are required to take into consideration when, uh, reviewing and recommending a variance. So. Okay, keep on going. Okay. So each of those four were considered, and staff recommends approval conditional to reduce the number of parking spaces from 220 to 144. And then part four, um, to allow parking in front of the building, which it only exists in front of the original, uh, sanctuary building. And based on the limited area to place required parking, and the applicant will be installing a 15-foot landscape strip planted to buffer standard, staff recommends approval conditional of this request. And in conclusion, if approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed church and associated activity center is consistent with the City of Milton Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update, therefore staff recommends U2001 be approved conditional. Additionally, staff recommends VC 2001, parts one and four be approved conditional. And I'll just, uh, step through the recommended conditions. Um, 1A is assembly building with a maximum of 5,888 square feet and a 23,000-square-foot activity center for a total of 28,088 square feet located on 6.61 acres. Also included in there is accessory structures to include a pavilion with outdoor fireplace. And then everything is based upon the revised site plan submitted on March 16th, um, and whereby the exact layout of the project may contain minor deviations approved by the director, um, and, but in general that this, uh, any, uh, when they submit their land disturbance permit, if you, uh, decide to approve this, um, it would be consistent with the site plan. Okay? And again, uh, we included the hours of operation and the conditions, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 10, a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30, and deliveries, Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Three, um, to the owner's agreement to the following considerations, to construct new parking areas with porous grass pavers or crushed gravel on the southwest parking area. So if you look at the site plan, we're not speaking of the, obviously, the existing parking that's near the corner or apex of the two roads. We're not speaking of the new, uh, parking that's kind of in the middle, but it truly is the southwest, um, corner near the detention that they intend to do the pervious type, pavement. And also, uh, number four, to agree to dedication improvements, basically saying that, uh, the public, uh, be subject to the approval of the Public Works Department and GDOT prior to the issuance of land disturbance permit. Um, entrances and frontage improvements shall conform to chapter 48, street sidewalks and other places. And then number five, well, continuing number four. B, if at such time the Director of Public Works determines that the traffic generated by the activity center's site impacts the operation of Cox Road and/or State Route 140, he or she may require the owner to conduct a traffic study to determine if the activity center warrants any additional improvements, at no cost to the city. If improvements are determined to be warranted, owner shall install those at no cost to the city. Number five, um, just our general, um, condition in regards to stormwater management. And I believe that is the, oh. Also, just wanted to let you know, um, based on the city attorney's recommendation that when you go to vote, if you decide to approve this item, that you would do a, uh, one, um, motion for the use permit, and then a second for the recommended concurrent variance, because we've separated it out from the, um, actual ordinance, um, for the approval of conditions. So that being because, uh, the variances can expire after, um, I believe it's 36 months. Um, and therefore, if they didn't build it for another five years, they would have to come back and request those variances, um, separately to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm here to answer any questions, and, um, the applicant is here, uh, represents, representative of the church as well as their architect.
Any questions for staff before public comment?
Just a couple.
All right.
Um, Robin, in the CZIM meeting, you suggested there was a discussion from the surrounding neighborhood about the lighting of the parking lot. Has that been resolved to the satisfaction of the homeowners?
Uh, we have not heard from them since that point. I pointed out that we are, um, required to meet the night sky ordinance, and it's fairly, um, restrictive. It's, um, one-foot candle at their property line, and it has to be shielded. And also, the, uh, church had indicated, you know, that they weren't planning on doing additional lighting, but again, if they do, they have to comply with the night sky ordinance.
So no additional lighting, like in the new, uh, soft surface parking or the pervious surface parking area, there wouldn't be any?
It appears not at this point.
Okay. And my only other question was, you just, one of the last comments you made was with regard to the timeline, do we know what the church's timeline is to?
Uh, you'll have to speak to them about that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had for now.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Dave, if you'll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Reggie Elkins to come to the podium. He's just gonna clean it really fast for you.
Reggie Elkins with RNC Concepts. I'm the architect for the church, uh, and would like to initially thank, uh, the staff for working with us so close through this process.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry, uh, can you speak your address also for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, 4621 Villa Chase Drive, Northeast Marietta, Georgia.
Thank you.
Yeah? So, um, you know, the church was built in 1853, and at that time, as many of you know, Milton was a horse farm, uh, and farming community. And really, the goal of the church from the very beginning was to keep that character with this activity center. And that's why we designed a barn look similar to, uh, Scottsdale Farms, and to try to keep that character within the community. And the, the real purpose of the activity center, uh, is not only for the membership, but also for the community, for the weddings, um, and, uh, retreats and that type of thing for the members as well as the community use. Again, on behalf of the church, uh, we hope that you see fit to allow these use permits, uh, so that, uh, we can continue, uh, through the process and hopefully, uh, build a, uh, an activity center that's worthwhile for not only the church, but for the community. And I believe you had a question that Robin couldn't answer, uh, is, was that timeline?
Building timeline.
Yeah, we've actually been working on contract documents through this process, uh, and we're hoping to be under construction within the next two to three months if we're.
For the entire project, that phase, it'd be wonderful.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm happy to see a church grow. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I'll have to tell you, the very first meeting we had with the staff, you know, anytime you come in with a church activity center, the first thing that comes to mind is a pre-engineered building. And so all of the staff was sitting there, you know, here's another pre-engineered building. When they heard the concept that the church wanted, uh, they got real excited about the project, and have been very beneficial in helping us through the project. So we appreciate that.
Good for you.
Any others?
I think you made the comment that you would use Scottsdale Farm as a design standard for the general look and feel of the, of the new building. Had, are you considering using similar construction materials as Scottsdale Farm as well?
Yes.
Terrific.
Yeah. Interior will be, uh, exposed timber construction.
Great.
Laura?
Just one other comment. Um, thank you so much for working with staff to, um, shift the site a little bit so that we were able to withdraw the other variances. That is very much appreciated every, anytime we have variances, we hear a lot from people. So thank you.
Created a few challenges, but it worked out real well.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Yes, that will, any other public comment?
That's all for this side of the report, John.
So we'll close the public hearing and, uh, open up for a motion. I guess, Ken, we have to do two separate motions, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so one for U20-01, then one separately for VC-20-01?
That's correct.
Okay. So open up for a motion on U20-01.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve 020, I'm sorry, U20-01 as presented by staff and the community.
Second.
Okay, uh, a, uh, motion from Councilmember Moore, and a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Is there any discussion on this? Okay.
So, hold it. I just want to be sure it's with the recommenda, the recommended, um.
Conditions?
Staff recommendations?
Whatever. Yeah.
I said as presented.
Because we always get into this discussion about what we exactly approved, so I just wanted to make it clear.
Ken, was that motion?
Was it, my, my position was that was inferred, assuming within the motion.
I said with, as presented by staff.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Good. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. That's unanimous. We'll open up for the second motion. Do we have a motion on VC 20-01?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we accept VC 20-01 as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a, uh, motion from Councilmember Moore to approve VC 20-01, a second from Councilmember Morag. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That's unanimous. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Protem Jamison for, uh, filling in for me there. All right, will the, uh, city clerk please sign the second and final zoning agenda item tonight?
The second item is consideration of ZM 20-03, located at 13210 Bethany Road, zoned R2, single-family residential by Big Sky Stables LLC. Chris Hyvley requesting to modify condition two of RZ72-222 to reduce the front building setback from 150 feet to 100 feet from Bethany Road to conform to existing setbacks in this particular area of Bethany Road. Agenda item number 2199. Ms. Robin McDonald and Parag Agarwal.
Well, um, hello again. Um, it's a two-parter tonight. Um, so I'm happy to be able to present to you, um, a zoning modification request. The current zoning is R2, single-family residential, zoning case RZ72, that is 1972. And here's a nice old folder I want to show y'all. Anyway, I'm not making this up. Um, basically, uh, it's a one acre, the request is a one-acre parcel with a house under construction and a pending minor plat under review. This is the location. It's on the lower part of Bethany Road, um, kind of near Mayfield on the west side of the, of, um, Bethany. You'll see the red, um, square around it. It's a one-acre parcel. And, um, the request is to modify, modify condition two of the 1972 zoning condition. And so that zoning condition at the time, uh, the Board of Commissioners made a condition to R2. So R2, if you're not familiar, is minimum one-acre lot. Uh, the front is typically 60 feet, sides are 15, and rear are 40. And we don't really have a lot of R2 zoning. I think the mayor has one across the street from his property on the north side of Doris, but I could probably count maybe on one hand how many we have in the city. In this situation, um, the Board of Commissioners made a condition to, um, require that all structures be 150 feet away from Bethany Road. When, if you want to go ahead. And again, this is the zoning. The R2 is that orangey ugly color. But you can see it, it's different from the AG1, and that's, uh, where the zoning is, the R2. Go ahead. Uh, this is the site plan. Um, Bethany, uh, Road is going in a north-south, uh, direction. Okay. Just press the screen. Oh, the screen. Okay. Okay. Cool. And so you can see, this is an as-built of the foundation of the house. Um, and basically, when I started working on doing plan review of, of plats, and, um, I looked at the plat and I pulled the, the condition, and I realized that, um, that this house that was under construction under a legal lot of record, that was part of a minor plat, that they also were in the midst of, uh, modifying, not this parcel, but some other parcels around it, that it was, um, not, uh, 150 feet away from the property. Okay. I'm not good at this. Hmm? Okay. Oh, gosh. I went, okay, the history. Um, the subject site, again, I said, was, uh, AG1. I won't go through all that. I talked about in 1972, the Board of Commissioners did, uh, rezone it. Again, I talked about, um, the 150 feet from Bethany Road instead of the minimum required setback of 60 feet, which is, um, for R2. And I'm not doing a very good job. Oh. Okay. Okay. As I mentioned, uh, this was a part of a three-lot, uh, minor plat subdivision that was approved in early 2018, and later in 2018, they moved some property lines around, not this particular lot. And then, again, in late 2019, the applicant submitted a third revision or a second revision to the same three lots. And that's at the time that it was discovered, uh, this requirement for the 150 feet. And then I just said that. And on June 23rd, the applicant was present at the community zoning information meeting held at Milton City Hall. This meeting was also held virtually via Zoom. There were no participants or attendees for this particular request. Again, I, um, already went through, um, what the, uh, R2 requirements were for setbacks. And staff notes that the, that minor plats, three lots or less, do not require to provide a rural view shed, but the R2 zoning district is not very common within the city, and that the condition, um, from 1972- the condition from 1972 required that 150 feet is also very unique, almost as though the Commissioners predicted the need to preserve the rural view shed 50, 40 years ahead of their time. It's staff's opinion that this reduction of the front building setback is in keeping with the policy preserving the rural view shed along this corridor, and the intent of the original zoning condition approved in 1972. So staff recommends that Condition 2 of RZ72-222, 13210 Bethany Road be approved conditional as requested by the applicant, which is to reduce it from 150 feet to 100 feet, the front building setback line. So. And again, this, if you so choose to approve this zoning modification, this is what the condition would read, except for 13210 Bethany Road, which shall observe 100-foot setback from Bethany Road. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And the applicant is here as well, so.
Okay. Any questions for Ron or staff on this? Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a public comment on this?
We do, Mayor. We have two public comments on this.
Okay.
Our first one will be with Mr. Scott Reese.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese with Brumalo Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I'm here tonight representing the Annie Fay Gardner Estate, and I have provided this city with a letter that designates me as an agent for them. They are the property that is due south and west of the subject property. And they, the trustees are in full support of granting the variance for this property. Ms. Gardner is in a nursing home and unable to attend. So that is the reason that I'm here representing them. So just wanted to reiterate that the adjoining property owner to the south and west is in favor of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tammy, you say we have another public comment?
We do. We have one more, Mayor. Our second and final public comment is Mr. Jaco Capers. Did I say that correctly? Oh, good. You have to correct me.
My name's Jaco Capers. I am also an adjacent property owner. I guess that would make me to the north side of the property in question. I just want to state that I'm in support of the variance as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, no more public hearing.
No comment, please.
No more public comments. So that, I will close the public hearing part of this. And again, open back up. Is there any questions or comments from council on this to staff? Then I'll open up for a motion.
All right. Be happy to do that. Mayor and council, make a motion for agenda item 20. Is that, do you want me to lead with that, or is it ZM?
You go ahead with the Z.
All right, ZM20-03, that we approve ZM20-03.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly for approval of this agenda item, and a second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much to staff and the applicant there. Let's see, we'll move on to unfinished business. If the city clerk will please sound that item.
The item is consideration to adopt the revised Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance and Tree Conservation Manual, Agenda Item Number 2157, Mr. Parag Agrawal.
Mayor and the city council members, I'm Parag Agrawal, city's community development director. And today we are here to present you the final draft of the tree conservation ordinance and the tree manual. I also have with me the city arborist Sandra Duit. Sandra has served as the project manager of this very important project. As you know, the city staff has been working on this ordinance for a couple of years now. And the tree conservation ordinance is very important to preserve and enhance the unique character of the Milton community. The staff made a presentation in front of the, the staff made a presentation in front of the city council on June 15. And at the June 15 city council meeting, we had a very good discussion, and we got a very good feedback from the city council members. And based on the feedback received on the June 15 city council meeting, the staff has made four changes to the tree ordinance and to the tree manual. The goal of today's presentation is not to go over the entire presentation again, but to focus on the four changes that have been made following the June 15 city council meeting. If the, if the city council adopts the tree conservation ordinance today, the new ordinance will go into effect on December 1, 2020. This will give around two or three months to the city staff to schedule some training workshops for the Milton community and for other stakeholders like landscaping companies. So now I will basically walk you through those four changes that we have made following the June 15 city council meeting. The first change which we have made is we have basically added the language in the tree conservation ordinance and also in the tree manual that basically says the property owners that truly have agricultural use on their properties are exempt from the requirements of the tree conservation ordinance as per the state law. And in our department, we have the entire policy, and we are working with the city attorney's office to make sure that we can make a determination that which properties qualify for this agriculture exemption. But in the June 15 meeting, it was discussed that this language should also be part of the tree conservation ordinance. The second change which we have made, again, based on the feedback received from June 15 meeting, the staff has increased the size of the protected tree and also the size of the small tree height class specimen from eight inches to 12 inches. So if someone wants to remove a tree in Milton, they needed a tree remover permit to remove an eight-inch tree. But now that size has gone up from eight inches to 12 inches. So if someone wants to remove a tree of 12 inches, then only they will require a tree remover permit and not to remove a tree for eight inches or nine inches. The third major change that has been made following the June 15 meeting, and again, I will say this is one of the most important changes, as, by, by using the tree conservation ordinance, the staff is trying to incentivize the large lot subdivisions, which is one of the key priorities of the city council. So initially, we had two classifications for AG1 zoning districts. If the, if the lot size is from one to three acres, you are required to have 57% of the tree canopy or existing on your property. And if the property is more than three acres in area, you are required to have 25% or existing tree canopy on your property. But on the June 15 city council meeting, what we heard from the city council, that you were looking for a much more tiered approach. And what the mayor basically said, the city council was looking for a sliding scale. So based on that feedback, we have made three classifications. So if the, for AG1 district, if the lot sizes are from, if the lot sizes are less than 1.49 acres, you are required to have 57% or existing tree canopy on your lot, on your property. If the property is between 1.5 and 2.99 acres, you are required to have 40%, or existing tree canopy on your property. And if the property is larger than three acres, you are required to have 25% or existing tree canopy on your property. So basically, we have added one more classification from 1.5 to 2.99 acres. And the fourth change, I will say that initially, it basically talks about how frequent this tree canopy study should be done. Initially, the language was not to exceed five years. So the last tree canopy study was done in 2017. Initially, the language was not to exceed five years. Now we have added the language that basically says the first study will be done in 202, not, the first study will be conducted in fall of 2022. That means in the next two years. And based on the results of that study, the next studies cannot exceed, not to exceed five years. I know there are some city council members who are looking to have a language that basically says not to exceed three years. And again, the staff will be fine with that also. So these are the major four changes that were made following the June 15 meeting. At the back of this, I have my entire presentation from June 15, talking about the goals, objectives, what we are trying to achieve. But I'm hoping that at this time, everyone has memorized the goals and objectives. So I do not want to go through those. But again, if the city council approves the tree conservation ordinance, the next steps will be number one, is scheduling the workshops. And then the staff will also like to launch a plant Milton campaign that will basically encourage a tree canopy in the city of Milton, how we can incentivize and how can we encourage the Milton residents to plant more trees.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Parag at this point?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead, Karen.
So I thought we had discussions where the understory would be eight-inch DBH. Are we not following that? Or is that part of, I'm having a little trouble understanding it.
So now, that entire, again, that tree size has also been increased from eight inches to 12 inches for the protected tree and for the also understory from eight inches to 12 inches.
That would be a massive, I mean, do dogwoods even get that big?
And that, go ahead.
Okay, but at, but at how many years?
And I look forward to this debate as well. I share, I share Councilmember Cookerly's concern primarily about with the understory. I, I can endorse the larger specimen tree size to 12 inches, but I'm concerned about in the understory, where a lot of that is the decorative trees that have flowering and are seasonal, that support the look and feel underneath the larger canopy, that we would begin to lose that without any consideration for it because it would be, wouldn't require a permit to do that. So I would ask that the staff consider the change to 12-inch DBH for specimen trees, and consider leaving it eight inches for the understory decorative trees, which may need to be named. But I think that would accomplish, I would be more comfortable with that, that it leaves that, that the beautification part and not just the towering trees. I recognize understory is not typically counted in the canopy, but I, I think there'd be an unintended consequence that we would lose some things that we weren't intending by not having a chance to weigh in on the smaller tree caliper for the trees that are typically more decorative.
So I had my landscaper measure our understory trees. I didn't, never knew to call them that, so thank you for the terminology. But they're really old, and they're like, you know, 10, 11, 12. I mean, but they were pretty spectacular with their coverage at seven. I've been there 20-plus years, you know, six, seven, eight. So I just think that's misguided. I think it should be eight.
Can I, okay, and let me break in one second before we go too much further. Do we have any public comment on this, Tammy?
No, not on this.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Oh, it wasn't marked.
Did anyone explain to Mr. Reese that you only get to talk once?
I'm very slow on this first meeting.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and entertain the public comment.
Sure.
And then we'll get into the, sure. All right, so I think, do you have a card there, Tammy, or we just need to get that clarified?
Yeah, because it's only, it's only referencing.
Sounds, sounds to me like he was.
I'm referencing this right here, so I see. Let me just make note of it.
Trying to save time. But again, I'd be glad to allow the public comment, and then just, we'll get, just clear up the card to make sure that, that we have that on the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese with Brumalo Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. Couple of things on the ordinance. First, I want to commend Steve Krokoff, the city manager, for putting in extra duty to shepherd the, the ordinance that's before you. I think it's overreaching, and other people think it's reaching not far enough. So I think it probably is pretty close to what we need. And I really want to commend him because I think he did extra, extra duty in educating himself, because I kind of doubt that southern woodlands was his forte earlier in his life. And he took the time to guide us and did an extreme job. So I just want to say that first. Second, from a logistics standpoint, trying to locate every 12-inch pine tree and sweet gum makes our job virtually impossible on larger tracts of land. We have to go out individually, measure, ID, and locate those. I think the compromise that would most benefit the city was have 15-inch, as what came out of the committee, for the overstory large trees and the continuation of the preservation of the eight-inch flowering natives that has been on the ordinance book since its origination with, from Fulton County and adoption at the time for the city of Milton. So that, I think, compromise would satisfy both, would best serve the community and its citizens. My primary concern when this was started was to not unduly burden the large family landowners that are still left in the city or the large tracts, the preservation of the rural community. I think the overall gist of this ordinance addresses that, and there are enough workarounds that it doesn't negate the value of the property and will preserve what we most love about the city of Milton. Finally, my one, or major concern is that in the recompense planting to meet the canopy, I'm afraid that we're going to get a monoculture of trees planted to meet the density. And that somehow or other, and not in this ordinance, but that you make it a project going forward, that someone at the city, the arborist or another staff member, contact the University of Georgia School of Forestry, award-winning, nationally-recognized, shameless, a bluntness plug, that they be involved somehow in providing a diverse plan of a mix. I'm afraid we're just going to get the same two-inch oak tree because that's the most, that's the most bang for your buck of planting. And that, as we've seen through with the Bradford pears and the Lethal sops, if you plant the same thing over and over again, pathogens and insects are going to find that one plant, and you're going to regret it. So I would hope that you would come up with an incentivized plan to get a more diverse planting scheme that I think would be aesthetically pleasing, environmentally ec-. that I think would be aesthetically pleasing, environmentally, ecologically more. I do know if I plant corn in the same field 10 years in a row, I'm going to have diminishing results. And I think it's going to work the same with the tree canopy. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Is there any more public comment?
No, sir.
Unless somebody just says they turned their card. I'm kidding. All right, I'll close the public hearing on that. Going back to the discussion we had, now going with the eight inch size for the ornamental trees, is the council, you know, what's council's opinion on that? I know that's, Laura? I'm just going to try to take these one at a time on the lower side for the ornamental trees. What's council's feeling on that?
So I, I agree. I think that those ornamental trees are what we find a lot in the view shed. I've been looking at the ones that are around my place. Eight inches are pretty big for, you know, dogwoods and red buds and things like that. So I know that it's part of the density ordinance currently. So I think that it might be good to retain, you know, the thing that is good about that. And, you know, I'd like to see it remain.
Okay. On this one, Paul?
Yeah, I think I already shared my position. Joe, remain the same. I support the eight inch on the decorative.
I think Carol brought that up. So Peyton and Joe and Rick, what's your thoughts?
I'm fine either way. I don't have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm too. Eight is good.
Okay, and I realize that's ornamental, so, and it is, and has been in the past. Obviously, you have to identify those correctly. Is that do, you know, how do we do that?
Yes, so I also spoke to our city arborist, and we also do not have any concern for just if it, if the ornamented trees can remain as eight inches and the others could be 12 inches, we are fine.
Okay, okay. Let's, and then I'm going to bring up the 12 inch. And actually, the public comment from Mr. Reese, he mentioned 15. And I would say this, I know at first glance, everyone thinks about conserving and preserving and whatnot, Milton and land. You want to save all the trees. It can also have detrimental if we're too tough because that forces, you know, the tree ordinance can, with size and recompense, cost a lot of money. So the tighter it is, it may force somebody, a large landowner that wanted to keep the land or keep it in big parcels, to have to make smaller lots and more, more homes on it to offset the cost. So I'm certainly willing to, you know, consider the 15 or, as it was, or bring it up to council and see what, you know, if you guys want to stay at 12 as, as written here. If you, you know, want to consider anything different, 15 on that. Is there any thoughts on that, Carol?
May I ask a question? I hope that it's not naive, but I mean, the goal is to arrive at the canopy, correct? So whether these trees are 13, 14, or 15, or 16, or 17, I mean, ultimately, there's, there's a responsibility to get to the coverage. Is that correct? Okay, well, it is. I, I think I understand. I don't have a problem with the 15. If I understand this the way that I do and, and the way that that has been explained, because there would be recompense and things like that. And the number of sweet gums and pine trees that you can get in condensed areas, unlike what you can get with oaks and other things because they won't grow that closely. So I don't really have a problem with that because we're going for that bigger picture, I think, unless I'm wrong.
Paul?
What do you think?
I think, if I remember correctly, in Prague and Sander, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, we were at 15 before. And where the 12 came from was during the debate of how far we should go. There was some debate to go to eight. And we thought that, or the, what came out of the committee at that point was 12 was a reasonable compromise. But that was when we were looking at the whole picture, not with the separation of the understory trees versus the specimen trees. So I mean, I'm all about protecting the trees. So I would have no problem going back to 15. 15 was at one point in our language, it was acceptable for, you know, our first 14 years as a, as a city. So I would have no problem going back to 15 on that.
Yes, so Councilmember Moore, you are right. And Sander, correct me if I'm wrong. So again, it was a negotiation from eight to 15. So that's the reason why we landed up on 12.
Peyton?
So yeah, I guess to follow up on Carol's point is, as long as those are still, no matter what size tree, it's part of the original canopy that the developer has to get, get to, I think I'm perfectly fine, fine with that because I think the whole purpose of this was to prevent the mass grading and all of that stuff, which I think, to Carol's point, the canopy takes care of that. And the 15 inches is more of the individual property owner that wants to take, take down a tree, I guess, is kind of where I'm going with it. So as long as, so that's included in the canopy coverage. Okay.
Yeah. Laura?
Yep, I'm, I'm okay with the 15 inches. I just would request that, because the, it seems like the understory trees are important, could we include a list to include red buds, dogwoods, sour woods?
Yes, sorry. We already have the tree species list that identifies it in that canopy.
From the old, from the old ordinance, from the density?
In the new ordinance.
We went through a list.
Okay.
It actually came from Athens, Clark County.
Okay.
So.
So it has.
It's a tree species list from UGA.
Yep, okay. Just, just like magnolias.
Should go to, you should look at Auburn University.
They have a very good one, too.
I'm just saying. The trees die?
It's more for elephants.
All right.
Yeah, so we have an extensive tree species list that is an appendix to the manual. And it tells you what's in that canopy class that would count as the specimen trees for understory. So it's, it's dogwoods, red buds, sour woods. It's a lot.
Okay, just so that, so we know. Okay, because that's important.
I had a discussion in the, the committee about that. And Sander did a great job of really exhausting the search on that to make sure that we captured all those for the, for the list.
Great. Joe, Rick, you guys have any thoughts on that?
I'm good with 15.
Okay. The minimum tree canopy coverage on the different sides of lots, I know we talked about that and did, is everybody good with the layout that's on here now?
Yeah.
Like, it makes, makes sense to motivate people to do bigger lots. And really, so the other issue is the, the time, the three years versus, I know Councilmember Moore had talked about three years. I mean, my thoughts, I could go either way. If we're talking 2022, correct? So that's less than three years from now. And then we're no, no more than five years in between there is the.
Not to exceed five years.
Not to exceed. So if at 2022, which some of you guys will still be there here then, you can, you could, you know, adjust it then. If it, if we'd had a, had a big change or whatever and wanted to do it in two years or three years, or it's no change at five, is that, that's a possibility too, correct?
That's the goal. So again, we do not want to have, we don't want to say 2025 to begin with. So the first study can be done in the next two years. And based on the results of that study, we can always change our scale. It could be not to exceed three years, it could be whatever it is. Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'll open that up. What's, you guys' discussion on that, thought on that?
Well, I've been probably the most outspoken as an advocate for the three years, not to exceed three years. And I would just add these thoughts for consideration. I appreciate what staff is trying to do with the 2022 measure. I think that makes a lot of sense. If we're to go not to exceed three years from 2022, we're actually at five years at that point from, from now for what would be another measure. The practicality that comes in for me with, with asking for consideration on not to exceed three years after the 2022 benchmark would be in the fact that we don't know what kind of extraordinary things may happen to us in that period of time. We know that there's something extraordinary, extraordinary happening right now. And I'll cite the example that I did, I think, last time we were together. And that was the example given by a local realtor who had five individual cases of prospective home buyers out here coming in the 1.3 to 1.8 million dollar range with cash purchases. And it was, to a great extent, to be perceived as urban flight in the fact that we're dealing with the crisis that's going on around the world today. People are looking to get out to more open spaces, get out of the concentration of, of, in this case, the COVID, the COVID virus. But you also layer on the fact that there's been civil unrest in our cities more recently as well. There, there's reason to potentially flee from, from some of the urban unrest. So with the fact that we've had a healthy economy, we're in the middle of a crisis. I look forward to the economy recovering when we're past some of these crises. I think there's going to be a lot of development pressure out here because we are a bedroom community that still gives you easy access to the city if, if that working environment is still in a city setting. So there's going to be a lot of pressure for development out here that could change our canopy in a, in a more compressed time than we might normally experience. So I'd rather caution on the side of conservancy in this case and error on the shorter side of the measure than to go longer.
Okay. Anybody else with comments on that? Laura? Peyton?
I think the five years makes perfect sense. My prediction is, I mean, as long as we have this first one in 2022, because I really think that we're going to move quickly into an environment where we can get this kind of information almost instantaneously. I really think the technology is going to catch up and be able to understand and deal with the data that we get from satellite images and things like that that would make this information a lot more available. But, but I agree, it's something we always want to be ahead of. We don't want to be behind.
I, I guess my, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I'm at the kitty table. So I guess my only question, as long as it has not to exceed in, in there, I guess to go to Paul's point is, if we're seeing this pressure, I mean, we as a council can say, like, immediately, do it, right? So, I mean, that, I guess that's, that's my only comment.
And that was my point, too, just kind of a, we're going to do it in two years. And as you go through that process and you change, see the change into the two years when it's done, it says not to exceed, a couple, couple options. You can go, okay, well, at that point, say, let's do it in three years or because we're really seeing some rapid change. I mean, on the flip side, you could put it at not to exceed three years. And at 2022, you can say, gosh, it hadn't changed at all. It cost us a whole lot of money, a lot of time. Let's extend it to five years. So I think you could do either, either one, as long as you have that option, you're not locked in. So, you know, you guys have any thoughts on that?
Has everybody weighed in? I'll, I'll.
I think everybody's.
Circle back and make a comment after everybody's had a chance to weigh in.
I think, anybody else have anything before Paul gets the final comment? Go ahead, Paul.
I would just say, I, I think those all make sense. And, you know, I appreciate your, your contribution to help me understand where you're coming from on that. And I don't know that I need to fall on my sword over this item like this when I think we've all expressed concern for making sure that we're measuring in a reasonable amount of time. And to, to Councilmember Longoria's point about the ability for technology to catch up on this, it may be more instantaneous. So if I subscribe to that theory, probably at this point, not to exceed five, with the fact that there is a measure in 2022, we could reconsider if there was concern. So I'm, I'm happy to concede on that one.
Okay. Is there anything else that we haven't discussed? These.
Again, these are the four changes. You did get the city council members did get the red line version. You also got the final version of the tree conservation ordinance. But these are the four changes that were made after June 15th.
So, so basically, from this discussion and going through here, what I'm hearing from council is keeping the eight foot, the eight inch on the ornamental trees, but going up to a 12, a 15 inch for the specimen trees. Everybody seemed to be okay with the updated table on the, the sliding scale. And the same thing with the wording that we have now for the, the time in between studies. But knowing that there is flexibility on that if needed or technology change, that's a good point, too. So is there anything else that you guys want to discuss on that? If not, I'll, I'll open up for a motion.
Just one more quick comment.
Sure.
Thank you. I would, I think Mr. Reese makes a good point about the, the recompense. And although that's not a part of this motion, I think that it does warrant consideration by staff. And I don't know that it has to be an assigned project, but I just think as a good steward of our tree ordinance and our intent as a city, it might be a happenstance project to be undertaken, not necessarily an assigned task.
Okay. All right. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt agenda item number 20-157.
Second.
Okay, but again, do we want to clarify on the points that I read out? Because that's different than what we've got here in front of us.
So you want me to go through each?
I need to probably remove my second. What's that? Yeah, I haven't called your second yet, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, we have a, Councilmember Bentley is making a motion, correct? And I think the only thing that I read out that was different is the 15 inch versus what's in front of us.
Okay. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt agenda item number 20-157 with the addition of the eight inch DBH added to the, for the understory trees and the protected trees to be, to remain at 15 inches.
And I guess that would be the same as ornamental trees or?
Yeah.
That's all, okay. To make sure there's no question on that. Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley. Do I have a second, as read?
Do we have to say anything about the timeframe? Or is that done?
We, yeah, we, we didn't change that. So, so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I believe it was Councilmember Jamison. So I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval, as read, and with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. I do want to also thank staff and everybody and public and, you know, all involved for, I know it's a lot of work and been a long time, but I appreciate everybody's hard work. And obviously, that's something, when you look around, that's what you see and hopefully will keep us apart. So thank you all for all the time and hard work you've put in on this. And I'm not going to give Steve a plug on it. All right, so if, Tammy, if you would please sound the next new business item.
It's the consideration of a proposed consent order in connection with condemnation of action filed as civil action file number 2091CV327435. It's the Hopewell Road at Thompson Road Roundabout. Agenda item number 20214, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you a proposed consent order in judgment. This was something that was discussed in executive session. Per the Open Meetings Act, we have to come out and ratify any authority given. This was a condemnation the city of Milton filed with respect to a property at 158 Kramer Road LLC. Jehus Rehos Cruz and Anna Rodriguez were the owners. It's a condemnation of 1.04 acres of fee simple right of way. We tendered into the registry of the court $132,600 pursuant to authority provided by the city. In order to settle out the matter, we are actually going to contribute an additional $52,400 for a total take value of $185,000. This proposed order would in fact resolve the case. And as my recommendation, the city council approve it as stated.
Okay, is there any questions for Ken on that? And we've discussed it, okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 20-214.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Moore in favor. All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We had a new, another new business item added at our agenda. So if our city clerk could please read that, sound that item.
This item is that a resolution of the city of Milton authorizing participation in the Apple Developer Program and acceptance of contracts associated with this program. Mr. David Frisell.
Good evening, Mayor and council. What you have before you is a fairly straightforward agreement for the city to participate in the Apple Developer Program. From time to time, the city will develop its own mobile applications or have other companies or contract other companies to write them for us. And then we would publish those on the iTunes App Store. But in order to publish those, we would need to accept the terms and conditions of that agreement. And just as an FYI, our first program is going to be Hyperweb, which is being built for us right now, part of the Public Works Work Order System. Any questions?
Questions? Joe? Did you know all this is over my head? Expert, too.
So last meeting, we had a presentation about how we were going to develop the walking bus application. And that was in part because we were engaged in a grant that essentially funded that work. And we got good points and good press for being imaginative and that kind of thing.
Sure.
Most of this stuff, though, falls outside of the business of the city. We are not in the business of developing software. And it is not a simple thing to do. And it's, there's no prestige in, you know, having a login to the Apple Store in order to publish apps and stuff like that. We should be putting these responsibilities on the vendors that we deal with because they're best suited to manage that stuff. Now, I don't mind approving this because I think there's other uses for it, but I'm really worried that we're letting certain things, certain responsibilities get outside the realm of where they belong. And we don't want to be responsible for most of this stuff.
We're not, we are not using their app.
Dave, let me jump in. Hyperweb has already developed this app for us. It's already out there.
Who owns the intellectual property?
Hyperweb does.
Okay.
And it's, it's their, it's their app. It's Connect Milton right now.
Right.
So that, that's the actual application. We're looking to improve upon the current application because it's kind of clunky. Enable to, in, in order for us to be able to do that, Apple made us re-up this, this agreement. And that's the extent of what's going on here.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just.
He said it better than I could.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And I think if there's no other questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to approve the resolution of the City of Milton to authorize participation in the Apple Developer Program and acceptance of contracts associated with this program.
Second.
Okay. So I have got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. We'll move on to reports. I want to bring something up. Had a little bit of internal discussion on the CPAC Committee. We have to vote in a chairperson. And I believe in the past, it's been usually the chairman of the planning commission. So that being said, and I think Ron Gilbert has expressed interest in, in doing it or whatnot, I know we're not taking any formal vote on it now because I'm just bringing it up, but that, whatever we need to do from a staff perspective, could bring that up, put that as an agenda item on our next meeting if we have to do a formal, if that's, you know, go back, if staff would go back and look to make sure we do what we need to do on that, Prag. But I, you know, is, is everybody in general okay with, you know, the chairman of planning commission as, you know, has been done in the past or whatnot?
It's historically been.
Yeah, historically. So the other thing, too, I believe, Prag and I have talked, we need a couple of ex-officio members or members of council to be a part of the group. That's correct, right?
So we have a first CPAC meeting on August 12th. So we would like to have the planning, we would like to have the chair and the two ex-official city council members before that.
Okay. And I have talked with Councilmember Moore, being interested in that, and I'd be glad to appoint him to that. Is there another council member that's interested in serving on that, in that position?
Can we nominate somebody?
Well, I was going to say, if nobody wants to raise their hand, then be careful, you might get nominated.
Give me the, the scope of the responsibilities.
Prag, I'm going to let you or, or actually, council members that, you've been through it before, too. Couple of council members here, too, so.
One option could be, I'm just saying, this is up to you. One option could be like we have the different council districts. If Paul Moore is representing one council district, maybe the other city council member can represent some other part of the city.
Yeah. I think the question more from Councilmember Cookley is just what does this entail for this person on the council?
So again, it's a, as the city attorney's office just told us, these are the ex-officio members. Again, they are the liaisons between the CPAC and the city council. We will be, we are planning to have one CPAC meeting, let's say, once a month or something, once in every other month, around two hours meeting from six to eight. It depends, we would like that the city council members should attend that meeting. And we will just keep them engaged. But everything, as you know, everything which we work on, we always bring in front of the city council to provide you an update. That will always be there. But we would also like those two ex-official members to be part of the CPAC meetings.
Joe, I have a question.
I think, oh.
Hold on one second, Carol.
No, I was just going to say, I think that would be good for me. I don't know that I would be good for you.
One meeting you can go to.
All right. Sounds interesting.
Okay, Paul, you have?
Just having participated in all the, all the ones that we've done historically, I would say that the, the role really is, is an observer. You're not, you're not a voting member. CPAC members are already identified and they're the voting body of the process. It's driven by an outside consultant supported by staff. It's really a review of our long-term look for the city. So liaison role really is simply to report back and forth for either from a message from council to the committee or committee to the council. I can think of maybe not finite examples, but examples where the CPAC may have referred or deferred to the council member who's present for a perspective on it, but it's not to cast a vote or simply to be there as an advisor as needed, but mostly to observe.
Okay. All right. Peyton, do you have something?
That's a quick question because last, I don't know why we have two, because last time when I chaired it, Karen was the only, Karen was the only.
I don't know why there's.
That's what's curious.
It's a state DCA requirement.
Yeah. It's a state, it basically says city council members, there's an S attached to it. So that's the reason why the city attorney's office said since it's a members, we should have at least two.
Okay. Before nomination, is there, going back again, is there anybody on here that personally would like to do this or thinks?
Mayor, I'm going to, I just jumped in, I apologize. You're not going to actually be able to do the appointment tonight?
No, no, again, and that's what I had said, yeah, just like the chair, if we just get a nomination and we could confirm it at our next meeting, correct?
Will that work?
As long as you not vote, I'm good.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely would not vote, but I'm just trying to get a consensus. Is that, make sure I'm not out of line.
You're going to do it?
Because we'll have to nominate somebody or they'll have to.
Sounds like you got two.
All right.
All right.
Are you interested, Rick?
You know what, Carol, I'll let you handle this one.
We need two.
No, we've got, I asked for Paul.
Oh, I missed that.
All's in.
Oh, I didn't know you were interested.
Yeah, all's in. We need one more.
Want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I'm good.
We've got one, but we have two. Laura, do you enter, Carol?
Well, Rick, did you say that you are interested or?
What I was saying, I, I didn't speak up. And if Carol's interested, I'm, I'm fine with Carol taking that on.
We'll get three or four now.
Well put.
Carol, you got it. Merry Christmas.
I'm a little concerned about work travel, but you handled that before.
Our meetings are typically planned pretty far out. And it's, it, I think the first one is a Wednesday.
Okay.
Which is, Wednesdays are typically not great. If you're having to travel, it breaks up the week.
Yeah.
But with enough lead time, I can, I can work around it.
Okay. I can give it my best shot.
Okay. So again, we're not voting on or whatever, but we know there's interest from two council members here so that our next meeting, if we can put that on the agenda.
We will. It'll be on the special called on the 10th.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody on council have anything they want to report on? Okay.
Yeah, Joe, real quick.
Paul.
The discussion I had with you earlier today and I think with, with our city manager about some concern about the curriculum with Fulton County taking out what was going to be a potential feed to our firefighter program. I'm happy to report that the latest update on that is it's been reinstated. And so Fulton County has decided to cooperate with the request of the community and it's back in place.
Wow.
Good.
Good news.
Good news. Okay. Then we'll move on to our staff reports. Okay. Yep, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Couple of projects I'm kind of excited about advising you on. We're out to bid now for our extension of our sidewalk on Cogburn. Actually, we got, just got bids in and we're evaluating those bids now. So that's a good project, looking forward to that. We're also out to bid for construction of the Hopewell Thompson Roundabout. And we're out to bid for the construction of the Hopewell Hamby Roundabout. So we should see some good bids and hopefully be presented to you in the very near future. So that's kind of exciting. I know they're a long waiting and there'll be some construction activity going on heavily around the city before the end of the year. Also out to bid is the Public Works Maintenance Operation Contract, our contractor, our Public Works contractor essentially. We have that out on the streets to bid as well. We have completed two stormwater repair projects, one of them at Oakhurst Leaf and the other one at Hopewell Crest. We issued 14 right-of-way permits for the month of July, and nine of those were right-of-ways, two of those were residential driveways, and three of those were landscaping irrigation permits. For work orders for the month of July, we had 96, down a little bit from what we're used to on an average. The most common issue was sign issues, which is just about typical. And it pretty much levels out from there with potholes, tree issues, stormwater issues, and yes, dead animals and debris and school flashers. They almost, almost leveled out. So a pretty active month of July. And again, I'm excited about having those projects out to bid. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Before Tom speaks, just want to thank you for stepping up and with your, your new position. So as acting.
Appreciate it.
Parks and Rec.
Lots been going on with parks and recreation. As you mentioned, we've got a change in staff. So Thomas Rhodes and myself are taking the helm. All facilities are looking great. Fields look real good. They're getting rest. We will be shutting down the grass fields at Bell Memorial Park tomorrow, give them a little rest before the fall season starts. For summer programming, lacrosse, put on two summer camps and a summer program, 260 kids. That's just girls. The boys did not do any boys lacrosse. Nine weeks of basketball camps. And I don't have the numbers yet, but I ran rough numbers and there's probably between 180 and 220 kids that participated in that. Baseball, they did summer camps and a summer program to kind of replace the spring. And summer tennis is wrapping up now. Moving forward to the fall, we're looking at allowing all of our programs to continue with COVID protocols in place. I'm going to be adding another one that they're required to let me know if there's a positive test or if there's someone with cases. I don't need to know the name particularly, but I want to know, you know, what team they were on, if it's a sport or what class it was, if it's a program. So me and Matt Marietta can evaluate what we're doing moving forward there. And fall athletics should start up middle of the month. We've started to get some rentals picking up, too. We had 15 last month and we got 15 already this month, and they usually trickle in, could have a weak lead time. So things are going well there. The pool, pool's operating very well, have had very little issues. The pool hits capacity almost every weekend. We've sold 351 passes, which is up from last year, only four more. But we have sold 2,395 drop-ins. The whole last summer was 858. So the pool is getting utilized this summer, and a lot of it has to do with all the work that's been done. Lastly, we've got some Eagle Scouts projects that are just wrapping up actually this week. Bethwell Community Center got about half of it repainted, what they could reach without ladders, and all the decking and all the stairs are all repainted. And they did pressure washing of all the concrete and repainted and repaired fences. That's one project. And then we had a new wooden gate put in at Cox Road to replace a chain link gate. Any questions?
Questions for Tom? Okay. Thanks, sir.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief Austin?
Looking at our latest crime stats report, things are looking pretty good. We're down about 3% from where we were at this time last year. And area traffic crashes were down significantly, showing a 30% reduction from this time last year. And while we can attribute some of that reduction to less traffic from the pandemic with many more folks telecommuting, other jurisdictions, while they're also experiencing less traffic overall, they've seen a significant surge in personal injury and fatality crashes. Some more aggressive drivers seem to have taken the reduction in traffic as an opportunity to speed and to drive aggressively. Fortunately, however, we've not seen this trend in Milton. We're currently down 31% in personal injury crashes and alcohol-related crashes, crashes are also showing a downward trend. Continue to actively conduct focused traffic patrols in our high-crash quarters, and our current approach seems to be very effective. Over the past several months, of the many challenges of the pandemic, one has been recruiting new police officers. PD, earlier this year, we developed a robust plan for recruiting, which was going to entail some travel, so do some more regional recruiting, letting people know what a great community Milton is to work in. But we quickly found that that wasn't going to work as many of, obviously, the recruiting fairs were canceled understandably or postponed indefinitely. So we quickly reworked our efforts to, to increase our social media presence and our electronic recruiting efforts. And a police report, our efforts have been met with success. As of early July, we have all of our police officer slots filled. One recruit was already Georgia certified, so he is out in the field now training with a field training officer. And the other three recruits are in various stages of their academy training. So this is certainly great news in a very tough law enforcement recording, recruiting environment. And after these new officers complete their training, we hope to have an opportunity to introduce them in a more formal setting. But for now, we're very happy to have them as part of Team Milton. And that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Chief? As always, thanks to you and all your guys, except for Molly. Thank you, guys. Appreciate everything you do. All right. Is there anything else? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I have a motion to second to adjourn. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.